Like we're ready to go. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We were just waiting for a quorum. It is June 1st, 2023. This is the GBOS special meeting regarding the airport lease and HLV plans. Formal comment. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at 2:04 PM. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor also in the room.
Mike Edgerson, Housing Economic Development Supervisor.
And Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Roads Utility Supervisor.
Thank you. We have new roles, so it's not as rehearsed yet. That is our quorum for today. Guys excused with work obligations. And if Jennifer calls in, I'll get her online. Are there any disclosures today? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
To approve the agenda.
A motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second this, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Any objections? Go by a sent on that. Agenda is approved. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. We'll move on to the agenda. Number one, we're discussing the letter for GBOS to submit as comment 28809547, proposal to lease state airport land at Girdwood Airport. Amanda.
I just wanted to start by saying thank you so much to Mike and Brianna for drafting this letter. I feel like it really hits the points that the community was concerned about without being too anti-development, just very good at pointing out the drawbacks and concerns. While, yeah, also stating the potential need or, yeah, fitting the future recreation. Not necessarily goals of our community, but things that are happening, whether we want them to or not. So I really appreciate the good balance in the language and feel like it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any comments, Mike?
Well, I just, yeah, I'll just briefly, briefly cover this. So this is obviously a response to DOT about the lease request. And I could actually start at the very end because I think that the way I summarize that, we don't have enough information to really say yes or no. So the latter isn't a statement of support or a statement of objection. It's just pointing out the issues that we think are significant. And if the proposal was go ahead, it would have to be addressed. So at the beginning, it's just kind of some background and acknowledgement of the context in which we are responding. Very little information has been provided directly by DOT, but also an acknowledgement of the information that has been provided separately by the development team. A thank you to them. I'm basically just going to read each of the headline sections. So first thing is whatever DOT's opinion is about whether zoning applies or doesn't apply, it's in code. Far as we know, it does. So under the current code of airport zoning, the ancillary uses of the project are not actually permitted. So that would need to be addressed somehow. The second part is under the intent of the zone, it's for primarily aviation related. I think it's, I understand why it's proposed and the language says it's aviation with some ancillary uses, but really it's the other way around. And we're just acknowledging that it's primarily a lodge slash hotel and related things next to an airport. And again, that's not in the intent of the current code of airport district. So again, that would have to be dealt with. Item number three, which I think everybody, everybody knows and acknowledges is there's inadequate road access to the site as it currently stands. So whether this is done through municipal process or not, I think it's a reasonable request to request a, to have a full traffic impact analysis done and some sort of plan for mitigation. And the thousand vehicle trip a day was just calculated based, based on the IT, the Institute of Traffic Engineers model for hotels. I think it's actually, could be over 1,500, over 1,500 vehicle trips a day. If it's 150 rooms at the 10.2 rate. So it would obviously be a significant increase. I don't know what, I think if you look at the IT numbers for residential neighborhood that size, it's around 200, 250 movements a day. So it would, and obviously it's also getting trafficked now, but that's probably still, it's probably under 1,000 now. So it would be more than doubling the traffic, is my estimate. But I'm not professional. That's why we've got a traffic impact analysis. Number four is the impact on recreational resources. We have had a lot of comments about this, particularly what impact it will have on Moose Meadows, whether it's going to, you know, cause problems. We mentioned later about drainage, definitely visibility noise nuisance. So that acknowledges recreational aspects. Number five is about, I guess, the opportunity costs on the airport as it stands. The plans were the master airport plan or the airport master plan and the layout plans are all about continuing the aviation facilities further to the northeast along the line of, behind the taxiway, between the taxiway and the road. And obviously this would take a chunk of land out of that primarily, or at least it would be out of normal general aviation use. So that's an acknowledgement of the, of the issues that come out from the airport. Impacting community housing, a few people brought this up at the last meeting we had. Again, the estimates I've seen for 150 room hotel, I think the ratio is something like, I think, three to one to one to one. So in fact, I think sometimes the place like Aliaska's employee base is larger rooms. So I think the minimum, the minimum we probably would be talking about for 150 room hotel is eight to 100 start. So, you know, 10 units is a welcome, is much better than zero. So we welcome that, but it's probably going to be, it probably still lead to an impact on community housing demand. And finally, item seven is the lessons we learned from the, from the hangar that was constructed at the end of Monmouth Drive. These are primarily about the huge amount of traffic that was generated from excavation and removal of material and the impact on drainage. And I think definitely both of those, especially the drainage comments will be, I think, reflected in, in comments from Kyle and the service area manager. So that's where it stand the conclusion basically is, you know, obviously there's a lot more information to come out. We'd like to understand a lot more about the real, the application itself. If it was going through the process, there would be plenty of opportunity for that and for public input. Hope the same thing happens if the project goes ahead through DOT.
Thank you, Mike. Excellent thorough explanation of the bullet points we tried to hit with the conclusion.
Can I, if you have a question, I have a question with Kyle. The, the information about drainage is primarily a summary of what I heard you say. And I just want, if you could, if there's anything that needs to be corrected, if you could comment on that. The paragraph just about conclusion. You don't have to necessarily right now, but I just want to make.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. But yeah. Yeah, I'll review it to make sure it's accurate.
Thank you. It's not meant to preempt any comments you make. It's just, I want to make sure they're consistent.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Kyle. We did have a question in the room. Let's start there. Can you come a little closer to the mic? Just front row perhaps.
My name is Tony O'Malley. I'm OX 598 Girdwood. And I know your folks in Grand Forks. So that's good. I welcome Girdwood being a more tourist friendly place. When I heard about this, this project, it reminded me though of when we were choosing sites for the cemetery. And one of the sites that was offered by the Heritage Land Bank was probably the same area that you guys are going to be building in. And it got shot down or it got excluded by the FAA. And that was because of the fence, the homeland security fence that was around the whole airport that Uncle Teddy put in. And there were heat restrictions on the memorials. You couldn't have a headstone taller than 12 feet because of the air traffic. And just for those two reasons. And then added to that, the excavation that the hangar needed to do so that it wouldn't be too high for something you should be, you know, I wish you well, but there are some hurdles that are hidden there. I just, yeah, yeah, I think it's okay.
Were there likely to be any noise complaints from the residents?
From the cemetery? No, no, that, no, not at all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments online? You know, we haven't.
Sorry, that's all. I'll do that for me first. Can I, can I? Yeah. Mute real quick here. Thank you. I move that we submit this letter.
We have a motion to submit the letter. Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Now you can open for formal discussion. And Deborah, please unmute and go ahead.
Go ahead. All right, thanks, Mike. I thought, and Brianna, I appreciate your time and efforts today, of course, on this very concerning proposal for so many reasons. The ones that you've stated in the letter that, Mike, that you just read and some were summarized. I thought I saw that somewhere, but now I can't find it. And I'm wondering, where is that so that I can see that? I went to the meeting packet and it's not in there.
I'll show you right now.
Okay.
If you go to our website. I gotta be careful here. I'm back feeding. But here's the website. Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Click on, ice packet. And there it is.
There it is. Oh, okay. You clicked on it. Um, okay. Can I just have a moment? Please just, just look at that and read that over. So actually you clicked on it, Kyle, and it's up on the screen right now, but I can't see, like scroll it down or. Oh yeah, there now I can. Um, I'm kind of disappointed in myself that for some reason I didn't see this letter earlier before I attended this meeting. I really appreciate, I think you did capsulate a lot of the bullet points there. I just really want to, are you doing that, Kyle? Like moving it up and scrolling up and down? Okay. So, um, yeah.
Deborah? If you want to mute while you read through this and then ask a question or make your comment, we can make time for that.
Okay, thank you. So now I appreciate that. Let me just skim that over real quick. And but now how do I get in control of moving that up and down? Sorry for my.
Deborah, you have to, you have to go to your server like pro, but no, but no. GBOS webpage.
Okay, I'm going to mute myself and let me look at that for a minute and hopefully somebody else can make some comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. And anyone, of course, is welcome to make independent statements and submit them to the DOT addresses in the comment period statement. Betsy, your hand is up. Please.
I'm doing the same thing that Deborah is doing as far as skimming through the letter, but I'm wondering if parking has been addressed because I don't foresee this lodge as being 100% people flying in. I see a lot of people driving there. And I was wondering if you could comment on that, if you have any more information about that.
I, I can comment on that. So yeah, parking, I'd say traffic in general is an issue. If there's traffic going to or from, presumably it's going to stop somewhere when it's towards the airport. If we end up going through the municipal process, there is no parking requirement. There's no minimum number of park, of spaces needed at a hotel. So it will be up to the developers to put in the amount of space and parking they think is appropriate that wouldn't detract from their customer base. So there wouldn't actually be any formal count. I mean, we just want to make sure it doesn't affect the, you know, the neighborhood. And I presume DOT would want to make sure that it doesn't result in a lot of parking along the airport access route.
Is that something you want to add in your traffic impact analysis section? There's concerns about parking.
I'm not, I'm not sure I've heard that from anyone apart from just now. Traffic in general, I have heard. I think it's, to me, it's kind of implicit, but I'd be open to any suggestions.
I'm just curious if the site is big enough for all the things that they plan on doing. We're going to build this big lodge and we're going to build a community sports center and, but where would the park even go on a lot that isn't incredibly large? That was my comment.
Just to respond to that, I think that is an excellent question. These sorts of questions, these exactly the sort of questions we can't answer because we do not have a site plan. And DOT not let us have a site plan until after public comment is closed. That's why I hope and assume that it will go through a proper permitting process through the municipal process. And then we'll get to ask those questions and review that.
All right, thanks.
Are there any other comments in the room or online? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Tim Fredwell speaking on behalf of Glacier Valley Lodge. We appreciate and are grateful for all the public comments that G.B.O.S. has submitted so far. We're still under a competitive bid timeline, but DOT has informed us yesterday that they're going to extend public comment period until July 12th. We would appreciate the G.B.O.S. support on obtaining the lease so that we can carry out our necessary permitting and design with your designated stakeholder group. And our ask today is a proposed addition to your resolution letter, which states that G.B.O.S.'s supportive of Glacier Valley Lodge's efforts to establish a definitive timeline for closure to the period of competitive bidding. So once the competitive bidding period is closed, we'll be able to have this open dialogue on our design plans and go into the dialogue about service area, roads, all of the issues that we brought up over the last few weeks. So that's, that's our ask is to propose a definitive closure to the public competitive bidding period to be added to your letter.
Thank you.
If I may, just a follow up to that. My name's John Faulkner. I'm part of Glacier Valley Lodge LLC. As a direct follow up to that, I want to be very clear for the record that that deadline has already been established by DOT in writing to us, and that is June 12th. And, and so while we welcome, I'm sure Tim agrees, the extension of time for public comment. The June 12th established deadline for competitive bids, as you know, is already one week extended. And we would like your support to hold to that. That's all we're asking. And I think we're aligned with you in that interest and the Girdwood community for a very good reason. It actually facilitates our effort to make disclosures. And what I think Ken is voicing to you is that that, that deadline should be definitive. We need your support on that because we can't have goalposts moving. And I think that that's in everybody's interest. So with that elaboration, all yields.
Our main comment today. We appreciate your letter and everything you've done so far through the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim and John. And Margaret?
I'm just wanting clarification. So it was extended originally from basically June 6th, 5th, 6th to the 12th, right?
Correct.
And are you saying that there's been an additional extension?
We were informed yesterday by DOT that the current public comment period will end on the 12th, but it will be extended for another month on the 13th. The competitive bid is going to end on the 12th. And our hope is to ask for that to be the benefit.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask. So the, currently the, the notice I see is, says that the public comment, walk of comments and competing applications have to be received by 4:30 PM on June the 12th. So you're saying they would likely be, or they, they have one of these, they will add the public comment, but they will keep the, did they actually say they would keep the competitive as long as it's on the 12th?
Yeah, we want to be emphatic about that. The memo we received stated very clearly that the public bid opportunity closes on June 12th as originally, excuse me, as amended, but June 12th. So we're not asking you to support anything different from that.
One sec.
Thank you for all the clarification. And I can see you're looking up for then anything posted. Would we entertain somewhere in the conclusion or in the opening about the competitive bid date?
We obviously don't have, we don't have that same information. What I'd like to understand is if, thank you. But what I'd like to, what I'd like to understand is if we, if the, this is effectively a public comment. So if the public comment is extended to July the 12th or July or whatever, that time period, then, and there is an opportunity to get more information between June the 12th and that time. Then we probably, you know, add more detail or change or change the focus of the letter. So if the only, if, if by submitting something before June the 12th, we lose the opportunity to submit an update, then I would suggest we don't submit this at all. If we can submit something now and later, I would suggest we do that. And I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know what the answer is. I assume we can just submit another one. If they add another public comment period, we should be able to respond with additional information.
Right, thank you, Mike. And if it's not noticed until the 13th of June, then the public wouldn't know. So that would be not an appendix, but something like that, that we say, well, now there's this extension once we submitted by 4:30 PM, but before that on the due date as published. Doesn't prevent or preclude anyone from making ostensibly more comment on an independent level if it's not from us, which would be a strange rule to apply after the 13th. To that. But I haven't seen anywhere that you can only write once. Kyle?
Couple of questions with this change now on this deadline. Did they give you any aspect of, we'll leave it, so the competitive bid ends on the 12th. Are they going to reveal the bids that were submitted at that period? Because basically all the comments are based on the proposal that you've put forward, but we don't know if like somebody else did put a bid in. Will they show all the bids that they've received for the public to give comment about those bids?
I'm not sure the answer to that. Vicky did not let us know whether they'll disclose any other bids when she let us know yesterday.
And did they give any, and people probably don't know, but did they give any deadline when they're going to select a bid at what point? I mean, they're probably going to finish that public comment period, but. I think DOT.
May I suggest a quick recess so we can call Vicky perhaps?
Sure.
Quickly for five minutes from now?
Yep.
So 2:33 PM is five minutes from that clock, but.
2:40.
2:40 PM. We're noticed until four o'clock, so that allows the flexibility for recess. That.
Just so people online are clear, the board is going to take a recess for 10 minutes to make a phone call to DOT to get some clarification on the, the bid and deadlines. So those online will take a 10 minute recess here. I'll put you on mute and then, oh, I guess you guys should take a vote first, but once you do, if they approve it, I'll put you on mute and then we'll bring you back at 2:40 after reconvene.
So just to clarify, I'm going to suggest 10 minute recess so Kyle can make that call. I move that for Amanda is prepared second.
Okay, we have a motion. Amanda, would you second?
I'll second, yes.
Okay, go by a sent. No objections? Okay, then 10.
Make sure I haven't received any emails.
Yeah.
No responses from anybody at D O T. They're all, went to voicemail, left three messages with three different people.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take some things.
At your permission, we can share you the email you received from D O T, but if you'd rather not, that's fine.
We're not in meeting at the moment.
Yeah, we aren't in meeting right now.
Give us three minutes.
We, we haven't received any answer.
Yeah, we just got it yesterday.
Yeah.
The D O T opened up this land as a.
Would you give us two minutes?
Yeah, we just need.
It's one. Make sure everybody's back on. He's off the video.
How is there anyone below that or those primarily that, like if someone comes with, they go to the bottom? Or is it just randomly underneath? Okay.
They're off the article.
Yeah. No. Okay, thanks.
They did notice it, but whether they've updated that notice.
So you tell us after this? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two forty.
Recording?
Yep.
Thank you. We're back in session at two forty P M. And do we need to do any roll call or anything? I don't think so. We have the same people online.
Yep, you got same people.
So and if S is online.
Should check them out.
Amanda, can you still hear?
I can. Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. And.
I would like to propose an amendment. I propose that we add a paragraph between, well, section seven and conclusion. And we'll title that. The deadlines for competing applications and reopening a public comment. I have sent this to, I've sent the wording to Carla Margaret as well. G B O S supports maintaining the deadline for picking applications at four thirty, as four thirty P M on June the 12th, two thousand twenty-three. G B O S further requests the public comment reopened after June the 12th to allow qualified potential lessees to provide additional details to the Girdwood community about their proposal or proposals.
Thank you, Mike.
I think that covers all eventualities.
Okay. Amanda, are you in a great?
A motion or the amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we can discuss or make any further comments on that. But like you said, it covers all decisions or bases that we don't know.
I think by doing this, we're asking them to reopen the public comment rather than extend it. We're clarifying that we support the end of the competing applications. The purpose for reopening public comment is to allow responses from one or more potential qualified lessees to answer the details without the threat of having competitors listening to the same thing and being able to adjust their proposals based on that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. We have Meade Chadwell online with your hand up. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only challenge I have to the letter is in point two, where it suggests, if you can move up to that language, where it says the lodge is not primarily aviation oriented. I, I would like to say, I don't think it's fair to come to that conclusion without a discussion of the business plan and the design. And let me, let me say this. It's entirely possible that with the traffic issues and so forth, the hotel might be much smaller to begin with than the aviation facility. We've heard both in this room and in other discussions, kind of market demand for additional aviation facilities. I can tell you myself as a consort of aviation in Prince William Sound, there's not now a flying service that can easily get you into the sound unless it's by helicopter. And, you know, there, there used to be one in Girdwood that Charlie Cicera ran. So I guess I would say that when, when you come to a conclusion about this, give us a chance to talk about the business plan and the three elements of the design if we can. The second, the second thing that I would just say is that after public comment, and I, and I appreciate the language that you've got, got there or after the June 12th deadline. We really want to work with a stakeholder group. We, we offered that in a letter last week so that we can kind of fairly talk about some of the, and some of the infrastructure issues. Frankly, there are a number of infrastructure ideas that, you know, Tim's letter today talks about going forward with the, with the, you know, the extension of Arlberg, which is in the long-term development plan. But there are other options as well. And, and that's something where we would be very happy to work with a, a local group to talk about. And the options have, you know, they range from one end of the spectrum to the other in terms of, in terms of transport access. So those are, those are the, that is a major, a very important early thing. We've heard from people in the, in the Alaska Aviation Community that they would like to see a greater capability at the airport. We've heard of people who want to rent a hangar space or build their own, and there may be an opportunity to work on that in a condominium type situation as, as happened before. And we're looking at ways to have a design that's, that's, you know, I would just dare say better looking if we can say that than what we've had before. So these are all things that we want to talk with you about, but, but to come to the conclusion that we're not going to have a chunk, you know, a major chunk of our revenue from aviation is probably not fair at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment and note it. I'm looking at where we could insert a word.
A response, that's okay.
Yes, please, Mike.
Yeah, I think we, we somewhat covered this at the beginning. There's not enough information. There's, I can't remember how many words there are, but, you know, we have like eighty odd words to describe a, you know, major development in the valley. So the information is very limited. We're drawing the conclusions we can from the information available. I don't doubt those, those conclusions and assumptions will change when we find out more information, but that's what we have now. But I think that's a, I, I agree that we do not know. It, it's up to one hundred and fifty lodging units. It could be twenty. I mean, that's less than a hundred. That's less than or equal to one hundred and fifty. We just do not know. But given the limited information we have, we have to speculate to some extent. And I'm comfortable with what we've done in the letter.
Yeah, and, and, and Mike, if I, if I may, through the chair.
Yes.
When you say at the end of paragraph two, substantial majority of the economic activity and site usage will be for road access visitor accommodations. You know, even if you just say appears to be, it's probably fair to, to us at this point. I don't, I don't doubt that there will be people coming by road and coming by aircraft, airplane. A discussion that I think this community wants to try to solve together is, is issues of the airport. Airport technology is changing, or aircraft technology is changing. We're, we're likely to see in the next 20 years, you know, smaller, quieter electric personal aircraft. And, and, you know, so I'm not sure we can come to that conclusion. That's all I'm saying. So, you know, appears to be, like you say, and that would be more accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwell. Well, in response to that, I would entertain changing will to appears.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appears to be. So after site usage or place.
Site usage appears to be.
Appears to be. Conveys the message from what we know right now and what we're assuming from limited information current, current day.
Take it be second.
Can we have a second, Amanda, from the rooms?
Yes, second amendment.
Thank you. We'll go by assent with that. Hearing nothing further. Anything else? We don't have any other comments? Yes.
Madam Chair, can I make one other comment?
Yes.
Yeah, in the, in the letter that was delivered to you last week, we invited G B O S to help us set up a stakeholder group. And believe me, you know, all of the, all of the questions that people have, we, we won't have answers for everything either. But we're very, very happy to work with a stakeholder group to craft some of these answers. The access issue, you could brainstorm and come up with 20 different solutions on access. We don't want to be proposing one. We want to be working with the community to think about that. On the view shed and improving trails and improving access in the airport area with the fencing. Again, that's a place where we'd like to work with the community. On, on, and, and, and that includes the sports center. So we're hopeful that, while you may not need to decide that in this letter or say that in this letter, but if you did say in the letter that you would, you know, accept the developer's invitation to work with a, a stakeholders group, we would like to work with G B O S on that. But that's, that's entirely up to you, but we did make that promise.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwell. I'll go, I appreciate your comments and I'll, I need to direct us back to the amendment right there that, that we needed to move on from. And there were no objections. So I would go by assent and that amendment has been made.
So just to clarify, we, we're now, we, we made the amendment, the amendment. So we were both making a change to put in the word apparently and add a paragraph about the deadlines. So.
Correct.
So we just need to make the decision on that amendment.
Okay. Let us make the decision. Thank you, Mike, on the amendment to the amendment. And we can discuss anything further after that.
Can I do one more?
Sure.
My, my understanding may be slightly different. My understanding is that we did just agree on the word apparently, which is the amendment, the amendment. We now have the amendment itself in front of us, which is basically adding the exception about deadline, which would include a change elsewhere. So we just have to approve that and then we'll have the updates.
Okay. So do I need to entertain a motion to approve that?
I think we just wrote it in that by a center.
Okay. How could we have a roll call vote?
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That passes three zero.
Okay. I jump in with that. Now from Mr. Chadwell's comments about secondary item, which is the stakeholder group. That is kind of after the, this steps, but it's great to hear and something that we can consider after this letter. So is there anything else we need to discuss on this? If there's nothing else, then I think we should move on to, yes, yes, please.
We venture this stop point company. With respect to number, item number six, impact on community housing. My testimony would be twofold. I know that there have been discussions in the community that a hotel actually serves to relieve demand on other types of short-term housing. And there doesn't seem to be a finding here to that fact. And so I, I think it is an open conversation about the degree to which a hotel does add to or subtract from inadequacy of employee housing. It's our intent, of course, to provide employee housing. The second testimony I would offer as a hotel owner of a hundred and fifty unit hotel is in a very similar environment that the assumptions here of staffing are high. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I, can I ask what staff you have? Sorry, what staff, what number of staff do you have on land in full-time accordance roughly, if you're able to say so?
I'm certainly open to say so. It varies in the winter. It's at peak, 55 to 60. This time of year, 74, peak July, 85.
Okay. I remember at one point I had 80, maybe it says 100, but.
And we have a full service restaurant.
Yep.
I will admit that it's scaled back and currently not serving breakfast. Side point.
There was an 80 at one point.
Yeah, at one stage it was 80. We had 80, we had 100 and we had 100. So yeah, if, I don't, I don't honestly think this is particularly relevant. This isn't a finding of fact. This is just a statement based on what we, what little information we know. So absolutely is true that there is, that providing additional hotel accommodation is likely to reduce the pressure somewhat on short term rentals, but there's a, it's a very complex combination, but it's more nuanced than just, it is more nuanced than this part, I agree.
Might be able to recognize that.
Kate, your hand is up.
Yes, I'm sorry to take up your time, but it seems to me that what is also, there needs to be a sentence in this letter that just the physical space that airplanes and helicopters take takes a lot of space and it's not, it's not apparent where those planes will be. It takes about, according to DOT, it takes 9,500 square feet for 10 planes, and I just don't see where those planes will go. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Kate. I imagine that just, my first thought is that it could go to future comments in the permitting process when they, there is even a designated area for airplane parking. But it's a, still a valid statement, of course. Any other comments online or in the room? If not, we will finish this and go to item number two. Discuss the letter for GBOS, yes? Yes. Okay, let's formally vote on this. Some roll call, please.
Breonna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
Three zero.
Three zero.
That's okay. Yep. Been in this today. Thank you. Okay, number two, discuss letter for GBOS to submit test comment to HLB 2023 work plan and 2024 through 2025 year management plan. This letter was to be worked on by Mike and Jennifer, since she is not here, Mike, like to tell us how.
Yeah, so we're not really quite ready to finalize, but we have, we have did not have the opportunity. So actually, I'm going to go through. I'll go through the set of notes that presented as a, it's a table. You have the, Margaret, do you have the?
It's, it's way strong.
It'd be coming up.
It's delayed. Yeah, we have the format that you sent over.
Okay.
Which I had already printed. So for those of you who are looking at a printed mini packet, the two pages go side by side. So the table ones. The table ones. So it reads across the landscape of the thing. So general and it's, HLB's role was the developer and then the comment is on page two. The revised packet online.
Still coming.
So I can start this. So first thing, full disclosure, I do not feel we are going to be ready to finalize the document and vote on it today. I think this meeting, we can continue as kind of a work session and make sure we're covering all the points we need to. And then have a come up with a final draft and hopefully have a very, very short meeting, maybe even an online meeting. Just to comment on the, accept comments on the draft and and move that forward. I do not feel we're going to be ready to have the document for today. Still waiting for the, yeah, it's, it's getting out on the screen, so I'll just keep working on it. Okay.
So we're referring to the chart?
Yeah, well, I'm just going to, I'm going to think the overall thing. So I think what we're going to end up with is a set of general comments, which will be at the beginning, and then something probably will end up being like this in terms of a table. Comments to specific sections on the document. I think some of the things that are both in Jennifer's notes and my notes are very general comments. So I will start with the, the table. So that did both the, the plan itself and some of the policies talk about kind of this role HLB has taken on recently of being a developer of land. Not just the manager, manager of land or land bank. And I think we've had as, as the community in which most of that has happened, I'm thinking primarily the the industrial park and the, the Halt Hills project or proposal. I'm not at all comfortable that HLB is, that fits within HLB's mission or indeed with their, with their ability and the and staffing models. So I think we need to address that directly. And I've suggested in, I can combine the two comments because there's some which are related to this. There are some comments I've heard related to this elsewhere. I think HLB, at the minimum, it should have specific policies that address what, how it has to behave when it's in this sort of inherent conflicting position of both being a developer, a developer of a project, effectively the recipient of the land and you know, the developer of that land as well as the, as the body which is responsible for making sure it has the maximum benefit to both the community and the municipality. And also because they're inside the muni, there's this sort of inherent tension as well between their role as part of the administration and other parts of the administration whose job it is to make sure that, you know, processes followed, et cetera. There's, there was significant blurring of the lines. And it's not entirely clear that even in the, in the industrial park development, the, the best, the best interests of the community and municipality were achieved by HLB taking on that developer role. So I think that's a point which we've been, I guess, dealing with for a number of years and we could address directly. There is actually a specific part in the introduction which also takes on, which addresses something very similar when it talks about both its missions, the mission of HLB and how land is placed in the inventory. And in both cases, the intent is to kind of manage, preserve, bank land, hold it when it's not clear that it has a higher purpose, it has a more valuable purpose. And again, that seems to be somewhat in contrast or in conflict with the role it has taken, with much more active role it's taken recently. I'm going to sort of zip through this relatively quickly. If we move to some of the specific parcels on page 12, there is discussion of the industrial park, but it's in fairly vague or vague terms. It not, it doesn't address specific actions that are intended to be taken in this year or a goal over the next one, two, three years. And I believe we need both a, some very specific actions taken this year apart from just continuation of the, of the sale of plots which were identified last time. Sorry, Kai.
Jennifer wrote and asked for some input on the industrial park and I did get some short term goals with that area. And one is, is that the municipal use, especially particularly the Gerwood service area use down there needs to be plotted out. And I do think that's a process that can either happen by them selling the track. And then we, within the sale agreement, the municipal lot down there is a track, is planted out back to the municipality. So so that, that's worked out. Or in the short term, since we are connected to the developed road system, we do have utilities at our doorstep. The municipal lot is plotted out from the track and then allows HLB to figure out what they're going to do with the rest of the land going forward. But I do think in the short term, those are issues that need to be resolved and formatted, but I shared those thoughts with Jennifer to get more clarification on what we think should happen in the industrial park.
And we've had other comments along similar lines regarding the industrial park in general. Not necessarily prioritizing the service area use over others, but a lot of the, a lot, all, all the comments are basically about there's not great management of the land now.
Correct.
It needs to be improved, management of the land needs to be improved and there needs to be a clear path forwards to the point where the land can be used for, you know, greatest benefit and greatest purpose, which is not having permits.
And in the fill and grade permit has not even been completed from the soil that was received from the airport hangar. And so that, that one, from a user perspective is really difficult. And two, from environmental perspective, I'm surprised it's lasted this long.
I don't think it has, there's, there's evidence of erosion in several parts that.
Correct. No, I mean, in the sense that it hasn't been completed, that it hasn't been long without completion of the fill and grade.
Yeah.
You know, especially with it being a municipal owned property and project. So.
What would, what would be, if it was not a municipal project and it was a private project, what would the mechanism be if people had complaints about it? I presume that, you know, it probably doesn't fulfill the, all the permit requirements at the moment, does it?
No, it would go through a land use and then the land use enforcement would look at it and they may bring in watershed. Usually watershed is the biggest factor of it, especially if you have unstable slopes and water and, you know, you have like there wetlands surrounding it. You know, things aren't complete. So I just know like on a, essentially on a road project, if we don't complete it, then we have to, you know, respond and probably could be fined or cited, citation from right away or land use enforcement or things along those lines. So.
We're in this awkward space of, you know, part of the municipality that, as I said, is not taxpayer funded and does see itself as somewhat you know, separate from the rest of the municipality is, is, you know, has not completed, has not met the requirements it should have done. We're resulting in a, as you say, damage in terms of, you know, erosion and runoff into streams and things like that.
Correct.
Which would not be accepted if it was a, there would be, there would have been a complaint process already started, I think, if it was a private development.
Correct.
But I don't quite know what our role is, as being both within and without. This is one of the, again, one of the complexities of HLB taking this development role.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the, in, in the end, the ultimate goal is for the greater benefit of the users, you know, and so as a board, I think you're advocating on behalf of the taxpayers and the users for a functional industrial lot.
Yes.
Which right now I would, you know, say 66% of it is not functional. You know, it's it's bare minimum rule, you know. There's more, there's better gravel lots up in the mats too that were, that are more functional than this. So.
Yep. The fair answer. Yes, what I take from that is we can, we can be a little bit more specific about the asks within the one year and five year. And I think there, there has been another discussion between only two supervisors outside of meetings about, about moving forward with a both resolution and letters with specific complaints and specific, you know, a specific schedule proposed for fixing the issues in the industrial park. But we probably do that separately from the response here. I think this would be about setting specific goals for the next one year and identifying it's got to be treated as a priority project. And it's just kind of mentioned in passing at the five year. Yeah, which I don't think is definitely not giving it enough focus. So I think we can, we can, in terms of the public comment to this, we can be specific about some, some goals. I think plating out the the current permitted use is valid. And having a, having a set of, you know, specific schedule for getting the industrial park into face to face re-completion.
Mike, may I add or just clarify, since you're going in order of this, their role as a developer is hugely a problem for the topic that we're on right now, which is the industrial park. But whether that's what you, what the letter addresses first or addresses the work plan in order, it could definitely be highlighted right after the pros and cons of HLB's role as a developer of what, what is needed in, in our view, but, and then that would be less detailed than the future follow up from GBOS and more specifics with industrial park. Anyway.
Yeah.
Those are all really important to highlight in the work plan and then the five year. So however that works out with like the other comments we got worth, work plan and then five year. And it's in a narrative format. So first, first the role of developer I like as the beginning with the general. Two.
Yeah, so I've moved on from the general points within the table. Then we'll come back to the general points within the narrative. So I think we have, we've identified several issues regarding the industrial park. So we will go and come back with a better draft, more complete draft. There is mention both in, in both items about parcel six thirty nine. Again, the there is a statement about replating parcels to residential lots for disposal. We, I think we would want that to be consistent with the comprehensive plan when it comes out early next year, hopefully. And I know that separately, we've had discussions about targeting a specific percentage of any future development, public land for basically community housing. For, was it a housing or, that may not be the right term, for the housing which is allocated towards the community rather than second homes and absence. So however that works out, it probably is going to be detailed. It will be in the comprehensive plan of follow up. But a specific goal of a percentage for community housing, I think, should be included in any residential development within Gerwood in the future.
Do you have any other? Do you want to take a second to have any other comment on that item six zero three nine? I don't think that was in the last five year plan. So to have it all of a sudden in the one year plan with the asterisk, because we know why the asterisk is there. But it, it wasn't to the last five year in this.
I think, was it not in the 2000? I thought it was in the 2022 draft. It was not in the 21 plan, definitely. The last adopted one was 20.
It has been mentioned, but this is new verbiage with it. That's what I would say. I saw blurring in from reading them lately, but please keep going.
Okay. So go through. So on page 16, there's also mention of HLB parcels fifty three, fifty four, fifty six. Relating to the disposal in support of the Aliaska Highway Intersection redesign. I think there is a question as to whether that would be best as a disposal or better as a land exchange within Gerwood Valley. I think there are some options there. So I would like to mention that and perhaps explore that a little bit further. I think policy wise, they can, HLB can do either. I think they should consider opening that to land exchange within Gerwood. Yeah. The other general item I've got on the 2023 plans is in the one year plan, there is no mention of the other tasks that HLB were given from the Assembly Resolution 202240. Their first task they were given was to provide an inventory of the land that would be suitable for low cost housing development. There was also a task to then look at funding and to sort of pursue that to the point where it could be where a nonprofit could actually take the land and start working on it. And there was no mention of either of the, either the second or third task within this one year plan or the five year plan. So I think that needs to be explicitly addressed. Parcel 16, six eighteen. It's on page seventeen. That parcel is the, is allocated to the cemetery at the moment. And there was some there was some comment in there. Actually, you could probably, why don't you talk to this? You probably have better, better background than I. Cemetery parcel six eighteen.
And that was, six eighteen was mentioned in the 2023 work plan. And while we appreciate that it was mentioned. And while we appreciate that it was mentioned. It, the statement is copy pasted from a previous work plan saying that, that we're, they'll work with us, work with G B O S. While we formulate a cemetery design. So my suggestion was that the design was already completed. And it was discussed on, during public comments during the last year, last summer. And I wrote what meeting it was at, so that just shows that they didn't thoroughly. That, that, that statement in the work plan, so it's not accurate. They formulated the design and now hopefully would be waiting for the next. And these things change quickly as they did in the last two months with the assembly having a new A O. And then postponing it till June twentieth, so area-wide cemetery function. Perhaps as soon as this month and then bonding in twenty twenty-four. So, all I'm saying is the design has already been made.
The, the other, the other point I made in the table was that there is a, H L B has the option of disposal. Of land to other municipal departments that are going to take on the, the management of the land. And I think in this case, if it, if it's going to become a cemetery, there is another municipal department that would take on the land. So it should be used, it should be a disposal to the appropriate part of the municipal party. I don't actually know which department it is, but I think it's parks. But I think there's a little bit of complexity there because parks in the general department is, is Anchorage Bowl only and it's not area-wide. So it's not entirely clear that's going to be the, the bit of the department, the municipal party that receives it. But I think there again, there's a, there's a, it's more of a disposal, it is a, a sort of H L B holding on to it.
Right, so that's an opportunity then to, to suggest the word disposal to another manager.
Right, that brings us into another withdrawal and disposal, page seventeen. In previous versions, in previous drafts at least, and I believe the twenty twenty-one plan, adopted plan. Parcel six seventy-five, which is basically the Winter Creek Extension, parcel, the Eastman and parcel. It was proposal of disposing that to Goerwood Parks and Rec. I think that should be back in the plans. That we take on and directly. There is also a comment in Jennifer's section, where she makes similar comments about six fourteen. Where to evaluate process for disposal with direct sale to the Aliaska Resort. That's the area, basically, Chair Seven of Blueberry Hill. Between Blueberry Hill and the Winter Creek Extension parcel. So there again, there's very little information provided, so we get it. More information would be helpful to us. Okay, next item we have is on page twenty-four, which is the H L B parcels two fifty-one, two ninety-five. And two ninety-six. These were described as still not having a pattern, I think it was. So these are still sort of stuck in limbo between state and the municipality. And I believe that limits the, the options for the municipality to deal with it. I would, I would put some acknowledgement in there that that land has been, is being used. For recreational use. And I think it's going to be intended to be used for recreational use long-term. So this is an area again, when I think it's more appropriate rather than H L B holding on to the land, in case it could be used for anything. It's been allocated recreational use, it's functionally being used for recreational use, that's the only way we see it as being used. So I think that's again, is an appropriate, appropriate land to dispose of to, to Goerwood Parks and Rec. Again, acknowledgement to that would be helpful.
I, I agree with what you just said, Mike. And the uses currently and having more opportunity for Parks and Rec to manage land.
Okay, next point is within the whole section of actions within twenty twenty-three. And onwards, there is no mention of parcel six thirteen. Six thirteen is a very small parcel between, basically the, the other corner between Verbier and, and Alberg. And I think a few people have noticed this and commented on how suitable that potentially could be. For small multifamily development, potentially again of affordable housing. It's not even, that parcel was not mentioned in their analysis either. I think that needs to be acknowledged and pulled into the plan or at least addressed in some way. So six thirteen is missing and should be covered. My suggestion, it should be covered within that, within the report under the Assembly's request for evaluating parcels. On page twenty, they reference the Goerwood area plan that make no effort. They, elsewhere, they talk about comprehensive plan and how everything they do must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. There is no mention of fact that Goerwood area plan update is in fact the comprehensive plan, the only comprehensive plan for Goerwood. And I think it would be, it would definitely be helpful in terms of clarity in the document if they would, if they would clarify that. And explain that their, their future actions should be consistent with that plan when it's adopted.
I would just suggest, Mike, that that edit be made. When you say suggested, like that, that, however it's explicitly written.
Yep. More section on the, or more comment on the general areas of withdrawal from the H L B inventory. Sorry, withdrawal is the term they use when it's being moved to another municipal department. Again, there is a, G B S A as well as doing parks and roads and maintenance and drainage. We also now have Housing and Economic Development Power, which gives us again the opportunity to, to manage land. Which is targeted towards housing or economic development. It will be, again, I would like to see some acknowledgement to that and some, some at least outline. Some outline of a way that that can be done. So it would at least be considered, considered land to transfer to a, another municipal department that's focused on what needs to be done for housing here. Last couple of points, permits, there's a list of permits, doesn't include Goerwood Fire Rescue. That's been mentioned multiple times before. Appendix B has several things in policies which I think needs either clarification, because there appear to be contradictions. Or a significantly better extent here, explanation of why they're there and what they actually mean. For example, in Appendix B, I think it's part C six. H L B, it, there's a description of what a development agreement, when they have to talk about a development agreement, whether it has to go in front of H L B A C, et cetera. But it doesn't address how the development agreement appears and how H L B can commit. The municipality to, you know, various obligations when there's been apparent, when it appears to be purely a, a decision within H L B itself. So these are not small commitments, these can be, you know, many multimillion dollar commitments. And there's nothing in there which describes how, how that's kind of managed properly. Because I don't think it has been in the past, I think we see evidence of it being managed inadequately in the past. Regarding Holden Hills, a couple of general points on Jennifer's comments and then open it up, okay. So, these are again, a general cover this at the beginning. But in majority of H L B's, H L B A C's resolution this year, nearly all of them have been things outside of the, of work plan. So again, I think the, we need, there needs to be acknowledgement that. Over the failure to pass the twenty twenty-two plan. And I think even in the twenty twenty-one plan, there was significant work, which, significant actions which came outside of that work plan. There is some acknowledgement at the beginning that it's very hard to predict what will come ahead, and I welcome that. I think maybe just it, maybe just this, making this point to illustrate how hard it is to come ahead with kind of, you know, would, would. It wouldn't, it's not just a theoretical problem, it's a practical problem that H L B has been facing, we have been facing when dealing with H L B sort of. At least, you know, more or less solved over the last couple of years. And, yes, yes, this is a great point. And then the other thing, again, we will mention at the beginning is while, while there is language which says how much land management includes concerns. For impact on the land, et cetera, et cetera, there's nothing there which acknowledges the impact of. Use of the land on the community in which that land resides. And I think there needs to be an explicit mention of that. There is, again, I've been critical of H L B's mission, because H L B's mission is to benefit. In some amorphous way, the whole of Anchorage, without much consideration for the costs, which are typically borne locally to where the land is. And because half of their land is in Goerwood and only one percent of the municipal population is in Goerwood. There tends to be this mismatch between the, the costs, the costs of land management and development decisions. Development decisions on our community versus the perceived benefit financially over the whole of Anchorage. So again, I think that's, that's a point we make at the beginning of the, the beginning of the response. But we don't have, we're not in, we're not quite at the point that we can turn this into a final document, but we're getting close to that.
Thank you for all of your work, Mike, and for taking the comments submitted through Margaret and Kyle. And Jennifer for her work on this too. So I think at this point, we need to decide as a body that. While you and Jennifer continue to put this into the, the letter format, we could. Say we need one more meeting, whether it's certainly online to view the letter beforehand and then approve it. So it's submitted by the deadline. That'd be the ideal, and then if that cannot happen, it, it needs to be sent without the letterhead. Something like that from, from independence.
I do think it's a good opportunity to see if there's any other, any other material or general, general comments, either from the board or the community. That's things we have not discussed so far.
Yes.
Which should be.
Yes, I think so too. So are there people online or in the room that would like to contribute thoughts or comments on the H L B work plan? Plan, I mean, the five-year management plan and what we have so far? Please raise your hand. Margaret.
I am familiar with, just in, in conversation with Deb Essex. When she sent her comment in about something having to do with the trail that we think of as the Forest Loop Trail. And her concern that there was the H L B A C resolution, but nothing has come forward. And nothing is addressed in the current plan on that, so that may be something that G B O S wants to consider incorporating in that.
I think that ties in with the, our other, sorry, our other requests around Holden Hills.
Okay.
There's several, several follow-up actions which we've got a, we will look into that, we will respond to, which we have not got response to. One of which is the, is the clear identification of the, the land that's under consideration by Pomeroy. The Aliaska Village Land, and that I believe is coincident with the, with the Forest Loop Trail. So that may be why we've seen no action from H L B or no response from H L B. That's something which we should, should actually address explicitly within this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Margaret. I also think there were mentioned trails in quite a few parts of the work plan. And management plan, so highlighting something in there would be good. I did not send a suggestion yet to that. Don't know what would happen for the draft yet. Kyle?
While we're on trails, one thing that we'll be, may comment on, it may be good for the G B O S as well. A part of the letter that was approved by the H L B Advisory Commission at last week's meeting was that. The trails, trail development or trails that we want to develop here in the valley need to be recognized in the year and five-year plan. And so that means before we can start working on it, it needs to be in that plan each year. So if, it's almost like it's a standing business as we start to get going on it. You know, one particular product, trail project that we really want to get started on, once the plan gets adopted. Is the connection of Baron Loop to Aliaska Highway. Right now, it's a social path that goes through a wetland, it's quite a mess. That's a big demand of getting the people off the timberline, so we'll be working on H L B land there. So we will make a comment that we would like to have the plan being recognized in the yearly plan. And that staff are working with the Goerwood Service Area on addressing trail projects for that year. Because also the Mountain Bike Alliance will start probably on their projects as well. So, so it's almost challenging to give specifics without us knowing where exactly we're going to start. Because we have a whole committee process that we go through here to get started. And if we can hopefully line up with their calendar to be in their yearly plan. We don't want to delay a project a year because we're just waiting for it to get into the plan, that aspect. So, so we're looking for ways to adopt that into the plan, so it's a standing item with them, that we're always working on trails. We're always working with H L B staff to get projects done. Even on current trails that we own, we're just trying to do improvements, so.
On the, on the topic of areas, piece of land which are currently under H L B management. But the only expected use, really, I mean, maybe when the comprehensive plan's finished, it's even clearer. But the only anticipated use is recreational. What I've got is a comment in here that we, there should be a, you know, withdrawal from H L B inventory and put into Goerwood Parks and Rec for that land. Is that something, I don't think we've actually got, we've had that discussion with the trails group, I don't think. Maybe we did a long while ago.
No, we haven't had it with Trail School, because we were waiting for more details to be flushed out by H L B staff.
Right.
And there were some, some title issues related to when the land was transferred from D N R to H L B.
That's specific to, to a specific parcel, is the seventy-five of Winter Creek.
Correct, mostly though that land that's up there around the five K and the. So, and that was being handled by former staff. And then since then, it's all just sort of been dropped, so, so that process would need to be restarted again. I think that is a good process to have in the plan, to start being addressed here. You know, it probably won't happen in the next year, but at least in the next five years, it's something that needs to be tackled.
Well, I think this, there's two areas which jump out to me as being the most obvious. One is the whole Nordic Loop area out to sort of Winter Creek, which, which absolutely is, we've, we've dedicated. We basically love our plans and all of our expectations are that will be recreational, certainly. And there was an acknowledgement in the, in, in this document that there are some issues around some of that land. It didn't specify exactly where, but it's in that general area, so I think I understand why that slowed, slowed down a little bit. The other one is the Winter Creek Extension parcel, and as far as I'm aware, that's, that's clear. It's just a question of, it needs to be done.
Correct.
So I think that's against something else we can call out specifically, and we can use that as the example, we can then follow for other areas.
Correct, I agree.
So I just want to make sure that this, I don't think we've actually had that discussion with the Trails Committee about taking direct. Management responsibilities of basically transferring parcel six seventy-five, the Winter Creek Extension from H L B to Parks and Rec.
No, we haven't had that discussion.
Okay, you should probably bring that up a trail.
And we currently don't handle that job, because it's not within our inventory.
Right, okay. Because that's actually partially, that's managed by, was in the past managed by Aliaska, wasn't it?
Aliaska originally built it, but it's no longer been like under their management.
Okay, yeah. We would have to both take on management of that and we would effectively get the land as well.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's support for that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so highlighting trails would be a great addition to the letter, however order it ends up. Any other comments on H L B letter? Okay, hearing and seeing none, in closing, for this work?
No, I think we, we go, may bring a draft and then try and scheduling a very short special meeting just to address that draft. Before it gets submitted.
Thank you for doing so much work on it. Next is public comment, person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. If you're online, raise your hand, if you're in the room, come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda, we are adjourned at three thirty-three. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.